We at 6:30, we have a quorum, we'll call a planning board meeting to order. And first up for general information, do we have anybody, Bill?
Uh, Jim Channing from Pride.
Okay.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone. I've had some conversations with Mr. Dwyer and submitted an electronic copy of a request for an A and R, or approval not required for the Russell Street Addresses. If I could share my screen, it might be the easiest of.
Sure, let me just do that. Make that little adjustment. Okay, you're good.
Thank you. I'll just go over the application very quickly, if you don't mind. So you know, so we're talking about, you know, zero Russell Street or 55 Russell Street. I think it's 13 through 25, the new Pride over in the west part of town. Again, there's three parcels currently, 04C, 23A, 04C, 24, and 04C, 25. The main intent of the A and R is to combine the lots from three lots to two lots. The proposed frontage for lot one, and I'll show you in a second, would be 369 feet. And the proposed frontage for lot two would be 274.89. Again, there's no change in the actual frontage, it is on Route 9 or Russell Street. Does comply in our surveyor again certified. The same does comply with ordinance section 4.2, which requires a minimizer familiar, a minimum of 175 feet for any such building lot. Going down to the specifics of the lot. Again, lot one or 23A is this lot here? Again, this is the former Getty, the triangle. Current existing, I'll describe as lot, I guess B, maybe I should say A, so this is lot A. This would be lot B, which is 24, or 4C, 24. And then lot C is again where the station is and technically the property line currently between 24 and 23 is here. And again, the right of way slightly to the west of that, where you can see the new right of way. So the main purpose or intent of this is just to combine, create two lots instead of the three lots. Again, almost divided slightly by the would be the right of way. The right of way itself would be contained on lot two. And the proposed area of that is 132,032 square feet. And again, the proposed area for lot one would be 108,000 square feet, give or take. Getting back to the frontage again, we're dealing with close to 300 square, or 300 feet, excuse me, on what's known as 25 Russell Road. And the other ones approximately, I think, 195 feet of frontage on, for the first lot. Really just trying procedurally to clean some things up to get two separate lots instead of the three. And then ultimately, hopefully, something will get developed on lot one, but it's, I think this is the first step in the the direction to see exactly what we can and can't do with lot one, is to get just the actual defined new lot created.
Okay. And when I saw the first A and R, I says, I thought we had already divided this property, so I wasn't quite sure what you were trying to do. Now I see, so you're just combining from three to two, all right.
Okay, I think whether the doctrine of merger would have had, I'm just trying to clean it up, have a plan that's recorded on file that clearly identifies the two lots there. In my opinion, clearly buildable, and we're not trying to change the frontage or anything aside from just procedurally cleaning up a little bit.
Okay. Yeah.
Would that, would that require a drainage easement? It looks like you've got a drainage area along the west side of your your cut through.
Correct, yeah, there would be a proposed new drainage easement. Again, the area of this down in the, behind the gas stations around 29,000 square feet. The culvert goes down here and to this area, and then that drainage easement area would be approximately 42,000 square feet as well.
Rectangular area I'm seeing along the driveway, subsurface stormwater infiltration area. So that would be the drainage from parcel C is going out of parcel B?
Correct, yeah, partially over, there is one over near the upper right-hand corner too, but it would be again, the need for ultimately when lot one gets developed, evaluation of the stormwater system, whether or not there'd be a shared system or not, but at least there'd be the the need for the overflow, given the fact that it's in the floodplain district. Absolutely the need for the stormwater to be there at a minimum for right now, the gas station lot, and ultimately, depending on what may or may not occur in lot one, either additional stormwater, or at least a mutual use of the stormwater area, but.
Okay. Do you have a Form A, Jim? As part of your, you're part of your thing here?
I had these two forms are the only ones I had, I don't know if this is.
Yeah, that's the Form A from the new subdivision regulations.
Okay, okay, all right, okay.
It's the most recent one I had, if there's a better one, certainly please let me.
That's fine, that'll do. I didn't see the Form A at the top.
I apologize.
Okay. What I'll do, after we approve this, I will take and print out Form A, sign it, and put the filing fee on it, they can file it with the town clerk, et cetera. And as far as getting the four, the actual plan signed, you can see at your convenience, Bill Dwyer, Jose Grodnik, or myself.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so what's the filing fee going to be, Jim?
2250, minimum. Because we're not creating any new frontage, so it'll just be the minimum filing fee.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Channing, I don't know, you did send me the plan, but I, and I sent that around, but I don't know if you sent the A and R, so if you would just, uh.
Yeah, I got the.
I sent it earlier today, only today I sent the A and R around, or the Form A, I should say, around, excuse me.
Okay.
You raising your hand, Mike?
No.
You got your hand up.
Your Zoom hand.
Oh.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve signing the Form A.
Second.
You have motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, very good.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
So next person I have on my list is identified only as Kathy.
I think that's Ideal Movers Kathy.
Okay.
Is that correct Kathy, and Brett?
They're muted.
And then I also have Mark Dean.
How's everyone tonight?
You're part of the development team, okay, so we'll okay. Maybe we can do, we still have a couple of minutes before the scheduled resumption of the public hearing. I think the only, I was expecting Randy Iser to be here, when for the Michelson accessory apartment, we're talking about scheduling for the 19th, but the actual request that Kevin sent in was for the 17th, which is the Sunday. So I think we just have to, uh, I was going to have Randy, ask Randy if he would just request a further extension.
Okay.
But I'll I'll just clearly that was a, it was a typo in the, in the request because we don't meet on Sundays, so.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to 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 continue to our next meeting, the 19th. And not to the 17th.
Okay.
Is that going to be a formal presentation?
Yes.
Is this the accessory apartment or?
Yes.
Accessory apartment, are we going to notify the abutters?
They are very aware of that.
Yes. I mean, Michael Pill is representing the abutters, and I have been emailing Michael Pill every time they request an extension.
Okay.
Hey, good catch on that, Bill, I didn't notice that one. Okay. So I have a motion to go continue to this 19th? Was that a motion you made, Bill?
That's the motion I made.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That brings us right about up to Ideal Mover time. I don't see, I don't have anyone else for drop-in business.
Okay. We will reopen, reopen, not reopen, continue the hearing for Ideal Movers. And turn it over to Mr. Sparkle.
Yes, good evening, good to see everyone again. I'm gonna do the screen share here. With my phone ringing, turn that off. Here we go, all right. So, uh, picking up basically where we left off, there have been a few minor changes and some new information that's been swirling around even as early as this evening, this afternoon. Just briefly, same project team, I'll say we're a bit of a skeleton crew tonight. It's mostly going to be me and Tom Reedy's double booked. There are other events happening and we also have Mark Dean here, who you saw earlier. So if there are questions regarding building, lighting, et cetera, his brain trust will get into that. I won't read through these, but these are the sort of the homework that we had and the things that I think need to be addressed to wrap up the public meeting discussion. And we'll get started with the site plan. Just a few changes, the most significant is the water main. So I was able to sit down and have a meeting with Chris Okafor at the DPW, along with a couple of his tenants down there, and we brainstormed what would work best for the town as well as serve the needs of this facility. And there is this light blue and existing 10-inch AC water main up here. This is north of the rail trail behind the Walmart Plaza. What the DPW requested is that a full municipal 10-inch water main be brought down and terminated, it would be a dead-end line, there would be a hydrant installed, a fire service, and probably a separate potable water service. We might be able to piggyback these lines together depending on fire flow requirements, but one or two pipes will be going into the building from the street. Other changes, the last tidbit left over from Berkshire Design Group's comments was that we still had an elevation difference between the threshold of the building at the main entrance here and the parking lot elevation. And instead of making up that elevation difference internal to the building, what I was asked to do was raise the parking up a bit. So this area is up about a foot, there are no changes to the geometry whatsoever, just a little grading change. I also added notes for the Knox box both on the building and on the gate. So that's it as far as the site plan changes. There was hopes that we would have a sign that was sort of proportionate to the very tall, wide building. And understanding that that would require a variance that would be significant to accomplish what we're proposing then is a building sign that's 63.8 square feet, so not much wiggle room, but we were under the 64 square feet. Exact same type of sign, aluminum letters, LED backlit. The architect did provide an updated rendering. So you'll see there's no sign on the south side, which there used to be. And the sign on the front is reduced per the dimensions previously established. There were questions about the lighting particularly, so as you can see in the rendering that these display windows that show interior doors there are, have lights on the walls. And there was discussion about, well, how bright is that going to be, what is that going to be like? So the architect was able to provide a cut sheet as well as a little information in a letter which was submitted last week about these little wall wash lights, they're four-inch lights. They will be on a dimmer, so they have the ability to go from 1,000 lumens down to 100 lumens per light, and that's equivalent to eight candles, 100 lumens. It's actually a little less than eight candles. So these are not very bright when they're on in the evenings. So they should impose any type of significant light pollution issue. The lights also do face the walls, they're wall washed, so they don't point out into the public way from there. Next item that was requested was to increase the native species in the landscaping. Originally, there were very few. I learned that apparently native species are a lot more hassle to maintain. So I learned a bit from the landscape architects today. However, now the site plan does include more than half of the species are native. And it's essentially the same plan with just slightly different plants in different locations, there are 16 species plus annuals, they aren't even listed because they're just brief. Overall, there are 162 perennial plantings on site. And the one addition is that the retaining wall has been added schematically to the plan, and it's going to have blue gamma. Blue grammar, I thought it was gamma, but it says blue grammar, grass. So to soften that, that wall that faces the rail trail, so it's not a strong public view, but we are going to try and soften that, that's the only changes to the landscape plan. Going down a little bit farther. So this wasn't, this hasn't been on the table before, and it's something that we realized is a gray area. Tom Reedy, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, suggested that we, you know, put this straight on the table, it was in my letter before. And the port cochere, so for a moment, I'm going to jump back to the architectural rendering. This overhang canopy so that clients have the ability to get out of the weather, the rain, the sun, when they're loading and unloading. It's open on three sides, does come into the side setback, so this dashed line is the side setback. Now, I know Berkshire Design Group didn't flag this, this has been in front of the board for a little bit now, and nobody has mentioned it. It's not even clear to us if the side setback applies to an open-sided accessory function like this, so kind of tonight, my question is, do we have to worry about setback on this particular structure? Because we would rather know now, so we can take the appropriate action. And I'd be happy to move on, but if the board would consider discussing that even now, I would love that feedback.
Is there any significance to using a French phrase rather than not calling it an entranceway?
I have taken this from the architect, and I come to appreciate architectural language, it's very specific, and a lot of it is not from English, you know, finials and other things that are not, are not native to our tongue. So my understanding is port cochere translates to coach entrance, coach coach doorway, so that's just the name of it, I guess.
I just was curious.
I had to look it up, this was my first encounter.
I just did too.
I would, I would interpret it as an extension of the building, and so it would require a ZVA variance, but I'm not the expert.
What's the side setback in the industrial zone?
40 feet.
It is. Hmm, okay.
So as you get, I have the 40-foot setback annotated, and right now we are 24.7 to the face of the overhang, a little farther to the pillars. And, yes, please.
Recall that the senior center came before us and wanted a port cochere in front of their building, and we denied it, of course, that was after site plan review.
Well, they're being upfront about it, and it probably would fall into the category of a variance, and I don't, you have an interpretation?
I would imagine the ZVA would be favorable, I don't think it has any deleterious impacts on the adjacent property.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't. It just because they're in the industrial zone, that's a 40-foot setback, that's, that's all there is. I mean, in all the other zones, it's 15 feet.
I think it's actually an enhancement to the property. Is that why we can approve it here?
No.
No, I think, I think I agree, it is part of the structure, it's part, integral part of the design, and for good reason. But, yeah, I think it's going to need, I think it's going to need a variance.
Understood, this was, you know, the, you know, I know, I'm going to say the worst-case scenario, we figured that it would likely be subjected to the setback, and we we wanted to find that out ahead of time. So separate, obviously, because it's a ZVA process, we will be seeking a variance. We're hopeful that we will be able to receive that for some reasons that have already come up in the discussion this evening. So we won't be modifying our site plan at this juncture. And if for some reason the variance is not successful, you would probably see us back for a public hearing or public meeting perhaps with whatever revision we have to do architecturally to satisfy the ZVA. So, yes.
So you're just going to seek a variance for the 40-foot side yard setback to 15.6 feet, is that correct?
Well, the 24.7 feet.
24.7 feet?
Yeah, the pavement width is 15.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't see that, all right, okay.
Yeah, so we're almost 25 feet from the lot line, which is wider than most setbacks for the side yard and other zonings.
I mean, seeing that the planning board has no issue with this, if you keep the planning board informed when you have the ZVA hearing, I will come and speak in favor of the variance.
Thank you very much.
I would bet the cows would probably speak.
We could get a couple of moos over there, I don't know.
I'd be hard-pressed to see them as opposed in the public hearings. Although I would be very interested to see that.
Well, it's a Zoom hearing, so it'd be easy enough to put one on. Anyways.
All right, well, thank you for the feedback, and we will plan accordingly.
Just a question on the, on the planning, you said that native species are more work to maintain than non-native species, that's interesting.
That, that was what Snow and Suns said. They originally designed the site for, you know, attractiveness and low maintenance. And apparently, you know, they have no problem putting in the native species, but the feedback was, well, sure, we can do that, but it will cost you more to maintain because there's just going to be more care required and more effort. And I don't have further information than that.
I'm not looking for detail, I just, I mean, I, I have to believe them. They're, they're, those guys are the people that know what to do, and not us.
Yeah, that's how I felt about it too.
I would imagine if you just wanted to take natives, it wouldn't be a problem. But when you say native and you want it to be attractive, that might narrow down, and then you get into more, more maintenance.
Possibly. Well, if I get a chance to talk to the landscaper directly about that detail, I would, I would love to learn. I'm populating my own, you know, new construction home that I'm surrounded by now with native species, and hearing that they're more maintenance made me, you know, prick my ears up a little bit. Speaking of pricking up ears, I'm going to move on to the farmland preservation bylaw. We did receive this afternoon, and hopefully the boards had an opportunity to review, I believe Mr. Dwyer has. We did receive from the attorney, Jeff Blake, that, that a reasonably long opinion that comes down to the idea that the planning board has the ability to reasonably and rationally interpret note three of the table of uses. And note three is the note that said, in the business and industrial zoning, square footage over 75,000 square feet gross floor area would be subject to the transfer development rates. So I guess the first step before I go further is what is the board's interpretation of note three of that table?
I believe that that is what we thought should be the case, that we were putting in a large building in the industrial zone. And that's why note three is there to to balance the impact of large structures on the farming inventory of the town. My concern when I first asked the question was whether the wording would preclude putting a building of that size in that location. So that, that has been addressed, and it does not, so it is going to be subject to the farmland preservation bylaw. Now, as to your questions. As, as you know, the Conservation Commission has been restructured. And staff has departed. I know the last time we talked about this, Jim has a figure from the Conservation Commission, but it's three or four years old for what the, the average value is. I did, as soon as I received the email from Jeff Blake, sent an email to Ron Hall, who is the regional responsible party for the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, asking him if he had that information or any kind of raw information that would allow me to generate a rate. I have not had a reply from him today. So, um, so I don't, I don't have the answer, but Jim, do you have the, the old figure handy?
Uh, no, I don't, it's somewhere around.
Just under 10,000.
Yeah, I think it was 9,500.
That sounds reasonable, yeah.
9,500 per acre?
Correct.
And that applies to the area over 75,000 square feet?
Yeah, so you'd need, you'd need 10 and a half acres of TDR land, which come out to be about, right around $100,000.
I'm sorry, where does the 10 and a half acres come from?
For each 2,000 square feet of building, you need one acre of TDR land. So you are 21,000 square, 21,500 square feet over 75. So you'd need ballpark 10 and a half acres of TDR land.
And this applies only to the large building or for all square footage on site?
Anything over 75,000.
For the project or for just one building?
For the one building, so you got a small accessory building?
Yeah, so the small building doesn't count, okay.
Small building, that's correct, it's a single, the single building.
Okay, my numbers included the 4,000 square feet of that back storage unit in here, so we are, we're about 96,000 square feet, yeah.
92,000, so you're eight and a half acres.
Well, now, now we know ballpark, what, what we're looking at in this particular case. All right, well, thank you for that information, and is there something we can do to, to get a definitive answer on that rate? Or is that just entirely on the town's end at this point?
Well, if Mr. Dwyer is to get an answer back, let's say within a week or so, or. Well, if Mr. Dwyer hasn't got an answer back, let's say within a week or so, or how how fast do you want to move to the, because you need a public hearing to do this. And you also need a zoning variance. So between the two of them, you're looking probably another month out.
There's only variants for the the setback, but it's just a special permit for the TDR, correct?
Correct.
Just making sure I have the the process lined up here.
And that special permit is through the planning board for the TDR.
And the variance is to the ZBA. So. You know, if and we have, yeah, so. Depending how fast you want to, let's let's say Mr. Dwyer doesn't hear back within a week from. The person that he requested the information, we'll just go with the old value we have.
Well, I think we could probably go ahead and schedule a public hearing.
That's true. We can get, that's true. We don't need the value to schedule a public hearing. You're absolutely right.
Okay. Is that? I I'd love to schedule. I'm not sure if that is possible at at this point. Can can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Well.
Let me see, today is the twenty first. Let me see what we have on our agenda here for a month of today. You don't want to be on the ten nineteen meeting. That could be a very contentious hearing.
If it actually happens.
I think you want to avoid that one. We could schedule you. Is November second an election day this year, Mr. Dwyer?
I don't believe so, not in, not in Hadley or. Well, I don't think it's a state election.
That's usually every two years, right? We had one last year.
Yeah. We're not having a state election. We're not having a town election.
Okay. We could schedule you for November second.
All right, please book us for that. We'll do what it takes to get the application in.
Yeah, I will email you an application with the information. And then I'll take care of the notices. And the list of the butters, I'm assuming, would be the same as we had for. Yeah, because the buddy, the butters list would be the same.
Okay.
So if you could get us. Two more sets of a butters list or envelopes, however you want to do it.
Okay. Right, I believe Attorney Beatty's office took care of that last time, so I was saved that small bit of TDM.
Okay.
But hopefully they still have that file and they can hit print just as easily. All right, so we have a plan and a path forward on the TDR topic. And. Was there anything else on that that I am missing before I move on?
No, I mean. I mean, I think you covered. Pretty much everything we had concerns about.
Okay.
Jim, before before he leaves us, I have a question about the water, the timetable and.
Okay, yeah.
Sure, I I do have one more slide.
Okay.
Go ahead. Finish your slide, yeah.
Thank you. And and this is preemptively, basically because of COVID and construction and material unpredictability. As well as the a preloading requirement for the soils. The special permit for the site plan review normally would expire after a year. This is quite likely to not be enough time and we would request a two-year expiration date on this permit.
Okay. That's easy to explain. That one year. Say that that one year lapsing. Has been extended to two years. And I believe right now with the COVID, we are sitting at three years.
Oh. Okay, I know for the emergency order up until June fourteenth or fifteenth, there was permits were all extended. Was there another emergency order and I missed that?
Well, no, I I believe, maybe let me back up. We used to be two years for some substantial completion. And I think we changed it within our zone by law and adopted a state chain. And we're now with three years. Is that correct though?
Uh, yeah, that was my recollection, or that it we it went up to two years. And then. Then it was, something was extended to three years. I'm just trying to take a quick look.
But he can always ask for an extension if it's falls within a deadline.
Right.
Sure, it's easier to ask now, particularly that, you know, because there's so many clays under the primary building. They're they have to bring a lot of soil and preload that clay to basically squish the water out of it. It's not quite sure how long that's going to take. It could take upwards of a half year right there where nothing could happen. So. If we could just get that, something official, if it's already in the rules. Or, you know, add written into the decision. For at least two years. If it's three, great.
Yeah, I've just not seen it on a quick glance here.
Is the question, is it two years or is it three years, Mr. Dwyer?
That was the the three years. I'm just. They have a couple of things scattered around here, so let me just check one other.
Sure.
The timetable. Does it mean? The starting of the construction, does it mean substantial? Improvement to the to the soil, to the ground?
In.
Because I remember, I remember when they used to require certificate of needs for medical billing or hospital additions, et cetera, et cetera. And that just required the beginning of the construction and it could mean a bulldozer just going over. The land and taking some of the soil off the top. But that.
Yeah, right.
There are some cases that interpret it as something. Something more than. Something less than completion, but something more than not having broken ground. There's. But I think we definitely put it down for two years and. Go ahead from there.
That that sounds good. Yeah, if if we have at least two years on the clock, then we're comfortable. And if there's a year after that. All the more comfortable, of course, like most people. You know, they'd they'd love to get this up and running as soon as possible. But it's it's not, you know, you can write checks a lot faster than you can build buildings. And was there was another another question about an earlier part of?
Yeah, it kind of dovetails into exactly what we're discussing now. When the water hookup. Where is the water supply coming from? Are you going to have to go all the way down South Maple Street in? Conjunction with the Route nine. Improvement? Or is it going to be hooked up? Halfway down South Maple Street and what it, what does the town have for a timetable on that?
All right.
Require town cooperation.
We are trying to stay ahead of the Mass DOT improvements that are from the rail trail north. Because we would have to come through a portion of that and it would be terrible timing to have a brand new road and then cut a trench. So there there's. And I and I'm not quite sure the the Mass Highway timetable as well. I. Wasn't under the impression that that would be definitely not this year and I wasn't under the impression that it would happen next year or maybe it would. I think it would be beneficial to the town and and Mass Highway as well as to to make that extension. To get passed before that date, at the very least. You know, to get out of the the way of the construction. If for some reason they want to stop. For cost reasons or, you know, bank loans haven't been released and every stick of pipe. Is is problematic early in the process. You know, they may not extend the full thing right away. But the the work itself is. A a couple of days of work, really. I mean, easily within a week if you throw a couple of rain days in there.
Okay, so where will we, where will you start?
So that with the wall. Can get them. Well, the rail trail is here. And north of the rail trail, the ten inch water main comes and then makes a bend. Parallels the rail trail behind the the Walmart Walmart Plaza.
Can you expand or zoom your PDF just to focus on that area?
Yeah, of course. I'm sorry. There I am. Oh, look, lots of pixels.
Beautiful.
But, yeah, right now, the. The DPW doesn't know exactly where that pipe is, so there's a hydrant nearby. We're going to have to scope. This out. You can't locate it with metal detector because it's an AC pipe. And that's. That's a small technical point. We will be able to find the pipe. We'll open up, we'll cut out the corner here, we'll put in a T. Probably with a bend, depending on the exact angle that's really here. Add three valves, which would be to the benefit of the town. And then carry the new water main, the darker blue line to the south.
So the responsibility of extending the water main, is that going to be the town's responsibility or is it going to be your responsibility?
Well, this isn't clear at this point. And I would love clarity on this topic at today's meeting. I I'm not sure. I'm not sure how to do this bit of horse trading, so to speak. Obviously, this facility does require a water service. There's reasonable expectation that you build a new building. You you go and you. Dig a trench down to the water main. In this case, the water main's kind of far away. Farther than we would prefer. At the same time, what we're being asked to build is far more significant in scale than is actually necessary for this building. So it would be my hope that at a minimum, there would be a degree of cost sharing on this. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's fair that any individual property owner. Buy a bunch of municipal water main. That belongs to the town is maintained by the town.
That you're talking, you're talking right into my next question and it seems like a reasonable, you you're hitting the nail right on the head, so I'm.
Yeah.
It will be discussed later, yeah.
That's a discussion for the Board of Selectmen as water commissioners.
Okay, that's where that is going to come from.
Yep. Now, getting back to your question on special permits.
Thank you.
Back in two thousand and eighteen. Section six. Point one, I forgot what exact number, was amended. Such that all special permits expire three years after the date of issuance.
Three years, okay, so. Three years.
Now, the section eight point nine point two may not have been changed, so it's a little bit of a confusion there. But the main section of the bylaw that deals with special permits and variances specifically says. All special permits shall expire three years after the date of issuance. Unless unless extensions have been requested.
Thank you for that clarity. Three years should be plenty of time.
So does the board want to take a position on the ability of the contractor to? Utilize the TDR funds to. Incorporate that. Into the extension of the water main.
We don't have that authority.
That's something the Board of Selectmen would be able to discuss and act upon.
The Board of Selectmen don't have that authority to use TDR funds for that.
Okay.
Who does?
Nobody. Town meeting.
Ah. All right.
TDR funds shall be used for agricultural preservation. I believe.
Well, certainly that was the original intent. However. The CPA now has been. Funding much of the town share of agricultural preservation restriction. So there's never a short. Short supply on the financial side to qualify for the town share. So this. There may be a possibility. Of using it. To alleviate the town from the burden of. Or the contractor from the burden of extending that water main. And that's another question too. I remember if there were a subdivision coming down here and the water was that far, it would be the town's responsibility. And correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, and this happened, I think, in a couple of towns, and Southampton was one, where. It was the town's obligation to extend the water line to the subdivision. So. This is a little bit beyond our pay grade, maybe to make that decision, but I'm just throwing the thought out there.
Reasonable thoughts. Sounds like we've got a little more homework to do on some of the details around this. But most of that also seems to be, if I'm understanding this correctly. Outside of the planning board's purview and realm. Although you've got great information, I keep learning here, so thank you. Thank you for that.
That's a problem. We have some members that have been on this committee forever. They have long memories.
There's so much value to deep experience in these situations, much better than a green board. Oh, boy. So.
That's some type of two-edged sword, too.
Perhaps, perhaps. I am, I'm not sure that I have more to discuss about the project at this point. We are, we are hopeful that. The board would be willing to to. You know, move forward and taking a vote on hopefully approving the site plan. Of course, subject to any. Future permits and variances that that need to be worked out. We've got a little bit of that to do with the ZBA. And the TDR issue has to be fully resolved, but that. That's a separate meeting. But relative to the site plan, I'm I'm going to wrap up here and if you have other questions, of course, I'm I'm happy to talk about it.
Are you going to come back in three or four years? And request putting in a solar array on this property someplace?
Well, the the site's pretty well occupied. I don't see any more room for that unless it would be on the roof. And I have no, I have no knowledge about plans like that, I will say.
Well, if you put it on the roof, you wouldn't need anything from the planning board.
When you, I have a question on the west parking lot. When you raised the grades twelve inches, did that have any impact on the runoff? And what what will hit? South Maple?
No, none whatsoever.
Okay.
It's it's total fair question. The. There was no change in impervious area. There was no change in the geometry of the pavement or walks. And that's what drives the stormwater runoff calculations.
Okay. I didn't know if pitch gave it more speed, so it would run past the. The catch basins or not. Okay.
No, I'm worried about three and a half percent grade, so it's it's really pretty level. It is a parking lot.
Okay.
I'll tell you, Buck, you are very well spoken and I learned a lot listening to you, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
There's no question about it. As far as looking for a provisional. Affirmative vote from the planning board, usually we're reluctant to do. That because. We'd like to see the variance pass then. But you can get the sentiment of the board. Your presentation was forthright, it was honest and. We have confidence that you're going to do all the things you said that were available, but. The variance certainly probably will pass and. I. It would not. Bother you too much if we extended it to a for a few weeks. I don't know. How's the rest of the board feel? Usually we don't, we don't give those provisional type of approvals on a site plan in a major. Construction like this.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have. I'm ready to vote yes for. I mean, you're you're you're. Lined up here. I think all the rest of the members are too, but you've got a couple of. Things that we got to be, that you need, you need the TDR. Things that we gotta be, that you need, you need the TDR. And the zoning variance, and I think. I don't see any reason why you're not gonna get both of them, to be honest with you.
That's both well.
And because we got the TDR eleven two. We could continue this hearing to eleven two and give you both approvals at the same time. Provided, provided the ZBA has the variance by then. And it's not gonna delay anything.
Uh, now that I'm aware, I do know that there, you know, the, the owner of the land is still Gordon Smith. Um, I don't have the details of the purchase and sale agreement, but I know there were some deadlines in there, and I, and I certainly know that the applicant. Um, we, we already requested an extension some, some months ago, long, long before he ever met us, really. So. Uh, it's, I guess, in anticipation of trying to avoid a potential problem. Um, I do know that this approval from the board was one of the contingencies in that purchase and sale. Though I can't speak to the deadline per se, pushing it off to November makes me a little bit nervous. If, if the board were willing to, to vote tonight. And I understand it is a provisional, uh, getting the variance in the TDR. Um, which would certainly be at, at our risk. If, if that weren't able to go forward, then this is all dead in the water. Uh, or we'd have to come back to revise the, the site plan. It would be appreciated if we could vote tonight.
You're on mute, Bill.
It, it is more work for us to, to issue two decisions. The transfer development rights decision is format, I have a format that has that. Built into the site plan approval. And. I think if we get through that. Then I would be. More comfortable saying contingent upon obtaining a variance. I am also concerned about where you stand with the Conservation Commission.
Uh, that application is completely done, except I need the town's permission, which I've been trying to get from Chris. Because with the work in the right of way, the town is one of the owners, and. The owners have to be on board with the permit application. I, maybe the board, this board could. You know, acknowledge that, yes, you would support the application. I was under the impression that that needed to come from the DPW. Maybe, maybe you can help me out here.
The application to the Conservation Commission?
Yes, I need, I need a signature from the town as the owner of the right of way.
So. That's, that's for the work, proposed work with the water main?
Yes.
Okay, where do you stand otherwise with the Conservation Commission?
Um, I did not submit the application. It is sitting on my hard drive, but it is complete.
I mean, have, have they done a wetlands delineation here, or?
Oh, yes. Um, yes, there, there has been quite a bit of discussion about the wetlands, and I'll just scan over here. Um, you can see the, the designations A ten. The owner Gordon Smith did an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. Um, I believe was what he did. Anyway, the, the resource area has been reviewed by. The Conservation Commission. We would not have attempted the design without a very solid understanding of where. That line was because of the magic thirty five foot buffer. The entire science project was designed off of this. Uh, the magic no disturb line right here. So, uh, we're, we're confident that. The wetlands are well understood on this property and that we have, uh, met all of the local and state regulations regarding. But, but we're just staying out of it, really. That's, that's how we're managing the situation, as well as putting up pretty solid corrosion controls, but. We don't need any variances or waivers. It should be a straight by the book kind of application process.
Okay, so I'm just concerned because the. The functioning of the Conservation Commission is somewhat. Hampered right now.
Where I, you, you brought that to my attention, and it has me concerned in terms of the, the timeline that, that may unfold. But at the same time, there, um, these things can definitely run in, in parallel. Uh, the process with the ConCon usually isn't particularly long in, in regard, matters like this in my experience. Uh, since it's, it's pretty cut and dry, one meeting, maybe two. And of course, there are a bunch of other things that have to happen in the background on our end. I, I would have liked to have made that application already, and I was ready to do that about two weeks ago, but I've just been chasing a signature from the DPW.
Okay.
Well, why don't you find out what the deadlines are on these purchases and sale agreements, and you can come back on our next meeting, we can always. Talk about this again at that time.
Are, are you saying that before the November eleventh meeting that we could come back? If, if, if I find out, for example, that the deadline is, I'm gonna pick, pick an arbitrary date, mid-October the fifteenth. Or is that the terrible meeting day that you have? The nineteenth, the nineteenth was the meeting that you said try not to show up, but.
But, but if you come in for the general information, you can either commit in a meeting, we have another meeting in two weeks from tonight, and one in four weeks from tonight. So let's say you find out the, uh, purchase and sale is, like you says, ten fifteen, you could commit at our next meeting, and we could talk about this again. If we had.
On ten five, yeah.
All right, that. That feels like a bit of a backup plan, and I'm sorry, I don't have, you know, I'm not privy to that, that part of the deal and operation here. There are a lot of moving parts, and I'm just. One member of a team, so I, I can't answer that directly, but that would be great. Um, if I find out that there's a real, uh-oh, on the calendar. Um, that the board is. You know, willing to help that process along, so this whole thing doesn't just evaporate after we've done this today.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue to, uh, October fifth to review deadlines.
Okay.
I would second that.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Right, okay.
So continued until October tenth. Thank you very much. Sorry, fifth. I wrote down the fifth, I'm. The fifth, I'll be there on the fifth.
Thank you, and thank you, Mark Dean, for sitting through this.
I'm just, I'm just here for the Bucky show, so.
You put out a good one.
That's right.
Where, where are we talking to you at, Bucky? Where are you?
I'm in Leeds.
Oh, okay. You, you were where?
Northampton, Leeds.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, good, so you're very local.
I thought you were in England, okay.
Ah, haha, yeah, it's, uh, four in the morning right now.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for showing up, Mark.
Okay.
Mr. Ken.
Hi, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very well. How are you?
Good, I have to. Change, you know, I was. Prior to this, I had a, another meeting, and so it was like, now I have to, you know, change something in my head to, to be talking about affordable housing. So. I think, you know, what I shared with the board on Thursday was, um, the draft that we had. Gone through at the August meeting. Um, in addition to some resources. That I found that could help the board. Quantify and imagine the number. Two B, and I'm, I'm just gonna share my screen, cuz that's.
Yeah, I like the Shrewsbury model.
Yes, so, um.
That's not brand new either. That's been in effect for a few years, hasn't it?
Yeah, for a couple of years, um. Where is that? So the Shrewsbury model, and the thing is, do, the question is whether or not. Um, you know, in, when it comes time to go through these processes of determining, um. Payments in lieu of. Is the expectation that. The applicant will already kind of have an understanding of what they're going to be paying, and then. Suggesting to the board that this is what I'm gonna be paying based on your. Form, based on your regulation, or is the board. Is it gonna be the board's job to determine that, that amount? Um, because I think, you know, it can happen either way. Um, there might be a ballpark that the board may fit, seem. That the board may, um, have already estimated. But the applicant will come in with their calculations based on the research that they've collected. Based on your regulation. So, you know, that was kind of, we left off at the August meeting. With the, the request to, to provide some of the resources to determine that two A, which is. This.
Ken, essentially, there's gonna be a formula, and we just have to plug the numbers in, correct?
Yes, uh, it's going to be, um. Where is that? Do I spell it out in this document?
You know, A plus B parentheses minus C times this, uh. So as long as you can give us a formula. Uh, all we have to do is access the appropriate numbers, which are. The mean income for Springfield. And whatever the other one is, I can't remember.
Right, there was the MSA, there's the number of bedrooms.
But as long as we got a formula, we can click it in. I, I was just looking. When we started doing this originally, we weren't using a three bedroom house, you know, without including a two car garage, affordable housing would be a three car garage. That's a joke. I would think that we, we, we originally started out with a two, two bedroom. One bath.
I think at the last, um, and, you know, the board can. Um, interrupt me and clarify, but at the last meeting, there was a discussion because. One of the examples that I shared had that amount of bedrooms, and I think this is specific.
I read it. Yeah, I read it. I mean, I watched it.
Yeah.
I'm just. Is it gonna be a? We're talking about affordable housing here. We're not talking about. You know, for a family of six or seven, are we? I don't know.
So just to clarify, are we, are we in the. PVPC conversation with Ken, or have we reopened the public hearing on adoption of regulations?
I don't know.
How do, how do you tell the difference? By, by opening up the hearing?
Yeah, let's, let's just say that this is a further discussion with Ken, and we'll, we'll touch on the hearing later, cuz I think we'll end up continuing it again. I don't think we're gonna. Have a breakthrough tonight necessarily.
No, I, I agree with that. Well, you, you get my, you get the gist of my question. I just, uh, but. I'll go along, you know, we've kind of spent a lot of time on this already, and we wanna get something down on paper. But we all wanna also have something that's reasonable.
Well, I don't.
We're gonna have a, we're gonna have a three bedroom house for affordable housing. Is it gonna be a two car garage or three car garage?
Does it matter that we say how many bed, I mean, there's, aren't there charts for eaters, and isn't that up to the developer?
I don't know. Well, if it's, if it's, if it's three bedroom, certainly it's gonna cost more.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, the way it's worded is the average price of residential unit excluding four bedrooms. So if we take the average price of one through three bedrooms. That's gonna raise that price significantly.
I thought I saw a chart that had two bedroom or three bedroom. No, maybe I imagined it.
Well, you, you did, but if that's not in part of this calculation right here.
Okay.
The, the thing that. It makes, and Mike, you're, you're, raise a good point, because. When, uh, we were exploring this earlier, I know that, uh. I went to one. Program that PVPC had, was sponsoring. And that was pre, pre Ken days. Um, and they had someone from whatever the relevant alphabet agency was in Boston. And. For their purposes. They count affordable units. They don't count bedrooms. So, a, a studio apartment and a. Four bedroom, if you will.
Counts the same.
House, they're each one unit.
And I don't think.
And that's fine for counting. We're, we're talking about affordability, calculating the affordability. So if you take the average price. Of. Say, two studio apartments and. Two three bedroom houses, and you try to calculate the affordability based on that. The three bedroom houses are going to greatly inflate the overall value. Not, not, you know, I, I absolutely agree that they talk about units. Period, whether it be one or six bedroom house, it doesn't matter. And that's great for, for counting units. We're trying to calculate. Affordability of the home here, and that's gonna be a little bit of a different calculation based on size.
Well. Do you all remember when Barry Roberts had this focus group of, uh. People fifty five and older housing when he was proposing the East Street Common? And he brought this focus group in, out of ten or twelve people, and what do you wanna pay? We wanna pay two twenty five, two fifty. And it was a two bedroom. But, uh. In a one car garage with no basement. But then he said the people kept saying, well, we really would like. One bedroom was. Large, the other was almost like a study. Well, we want two large bedrooms. Uh, we want like a cellar, we would like two car garage, so it did escalate the cost, so. If you did wanna control the cost a little bit, you would say a one car garage, no basement, smaller bedrooms, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, you know, no granite countertops, uh. There's some way that the developer could control the cost, but how do we put that input in?
That, that's, that, that's what I'm kind of wondering about. How do we? How do we put a figure to the reasonable price? Of a house for the affordability? As opposed to. I mean. We've seen, there's, there's some pretty expensive two or three bedroom houses in Hadley. There's a lot of very expensive three bedroom houses in Hadley.
Yeah, and I think Bill, Bill's point is correct, you know, and we may not ask them to build a house as much as we would like to see what one looks like in an affordable unit. Uh, but. If it's just a unit. Maybe it could be offsite somewhere. It doesn't have to be, and maybe that would be more in tune with being affordable. I'm not sure either.
Yeah, I mean, this, this, this issue is getting. Your, your favorite words, Joe, the devil's in the details. We're, we're deep into the details right now, and it's getting. It's there. I mean, we wanna. We wanna make it so that the developer can put some money into a fund. But we also want it to be a reasonable amount of money, and that's some ridiculous thing that. We get nowhere with.
Well, if it's, my fear is if it's too reasonable. Then there's no incentive to build the affordable housing, and then we're not helping the people that need the help.
Well, what you're doing with this bylaw is disincentivizing larger developments. You can have a builder come in and build seven houses. At a cost of eight hundred thousand dollars apiece. Five point six million dollars, okay? You can have another builder come in and build eight houses for six hundred thousand dollars each. Four point eight million. So by not building. Another. Unit or house, whatever you wanna say. The, the builder that is. Spending six point four million on seven units, excuse me, five point six million on seven units, doesn't have to put a nickel in the kitty. Whereas the guy that's putting up eight does. So it's my argument that this whole approach of using number of units is, is flawed. And that we should be assessing a fee on the total cost of construction. And that we should be assessing a fee on the total cost of construction.
I have a question for Ken, um. If if a builder is gonna build a required affordable unit, is there state data and prescriptions that tells them how many units, like, oh, you know, our data shows your area really needs only three or two, you know? Uh, one, you know, I don't know. I, I, I don't think that that data, you know, the data that the state has and the one that is important to the communities is the subsidized housing inventory. So that's your Yeah, so those are, you know, the state would if you were to ask the state, you know, how many units, they're gonna say, well, you're over ten percent. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if there's, there's a number there that would be helpful to identify that need, um, because right now you're meeting the state, the state's requirement of ten percent. Um, exceeding that, um. But you know, obviously some may be sunsetting in the near future. Um, and how do you address that? Um, and then, you know, um, those conversations. Um. Yeah, I mean, so I think with regards to this, um, this payment in lieu of, we had that previous draft by law for the construction cost. Um, and I don't recall um, you know, how, what ended up, I think there was something that Jim, you may have mentioned. Um, town council had an issue with, I guess, one of the calculations. Um, and then this is another option for a payment in lieu of which basically is the difference between your average mean price of housing. And then the difference of what an affordable unit would be.
Did anybody hear what I said? You're giving developer an out. They don't have to build eight houses. They can build seven. And the value of those seven houses can be twice as much as building eight, and they don't have to put a nickel in.
The, the, the problem with, with the total value, Mike, is that could be all, that, that's gonna be just as hard to put a dollar value to as what we're looking at right in front of us of the, of the value of the home.
Well, except for the fact that if they build seven houses, they don't have to put anything into the kitty. And so I, I would there's, you're giving him, you're giving a developer an escape clause.
So bear in mind also that not all developers operate on the same model.
No.
So some are doing the land preparation and selling building lots.
Yeah, look at Burkum hasn't put a penny into this, correct? And he doesn't have to.
That's correct. He, he he's grandfathered. Um, then you have a a model like East Street Commons where Barry is building everything.
Yeah.
Then you have a model like Colony Estates. Where that's off, went off Shattuck, where the uh, the owner is selling lots. To people who will hire their own builder.
Yeah, so I think we're spending a lot of time. Ken, how, how many times has the Shrewsbury formula kicked in and money has actually gone into the Affordable Housing Trust?
Um. I haven't gotten that information from them. I wasn't
My guess is probably one or none.
Over fifteen years?
Yeah. Because there's outs, there's outs. We just found out what the, the outs are. You know? And, and I think we're spending a lot of time spinning our wheels here. When the result is gonna be minimal. If not, nothing. But that's my opinion.
Well, that is part of the planning process.
But we gotta, we, you know, we can put you know, I, I, I watched the, the uh broadcast last week and Ken's said, you know, put forty thousand or put fifty thousand. Put whatever you want in. Well, is that planning? No, but it's kinda where, where this thing has gone. You know, we, we, we can adopt, adopt the Shrewsbury uh, formula and see what happens. Because I, I think you're gonna find that it's not gonna generate much at all into the, into the Affordable Housing Trust.
So Ken, do you know if Shrewsbury has a planner? Is there's
Yeah, that, they put me in touch with their Affordable Housing Trust. Um, of which I talked to their planner, um, and the planner is relatively new, so there has been some transitions, cause my question was, how many? Um, you know, how much has been uh paid in lieu of the units being built? Um. I wasn't able to get an answer, um. But I, yeah.
Look at the Shrewsbury annual report, wouldn't it have the numbers in there?
Right, you'd have to go through fifteen annual reports, yeah.
Yeah. Well, but you, you might be able to at least see how much money is in that Affordable Housing Trust.
True.
My, my point is, well, you get my point. There's ways to get around this thing. And you might not, not again see a development such as the East Street Commons, where I happen to live, by the way, just because there's ways to get around any thing we put in, I think. So we're, we're, we're adopting the Shrewsbury mile and we don't know if it's generated a nickel into the trust over there. That's, you know, we can do that. Cause we spent so much time on this, we gotta do something.
I don't think we're making a decision to
You know? I don't, I, I don't think it's, it's gonna matter how much more you debate this or what numbers to put in. I, I think the whole process is been uh faulty. The more and more I think about it.
Well, when, when the board worked with um, Barry, um, Roberts. Those determinations were made on something, right? So the board or someone made the determinations that if he wasn't unable to develop those properties on site. That he would pay into a fund. Um. Was that based on any specific variable that we can either create a formula based on how those numbers, how the town arrived at those numbers? If the town thinks that that's enough. Um, or you know, continue to ensure that if we're going to be, if the town wants to look at this particular language that, you know, we worked on. Um, and then I'll get, you know, some information from Shrewsbury. Continue to do
Colonial Estates up in North Hadley, uh. They put in seven houses, correct?
Which one?
Colonial Estates off of Shattuck.
Colony, it's it's eight. So it just, just triggered the, the uh
Triggered it.
Just triggered it.
Yeah, he was supposed to have twelve and he lost four lots to the spotted.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, and I, I'm digging really deep. But I think the pitch that Barry Roberts made was that um. It's going to cost me X number of dollars to build an affordable unit. Um. And the other units I am building sell for X plus Y. We'll call it. So for the six affordable units that I owe you. I will pay you the difference between X. Or I'll pay you Y, the difference between X plus Y, I'll pay you the Y. Um, the profit, I'll make the profit on selling market rate units. But I will give you the difference between what it would cost me to build it to affordable versus what I will get from it by building it to market. Is that strike people as the argument he made?
Yes.
Yeah, and the, the biggest problem, Bill, was remembering how do we keep track of it? And uh it, it, it's difficult. Remember, uh, the lawyers, the lawyer was really saying you have to have an organization that will keep track of the affordability and and
So that's why we, what, that's why we agreed to let him make a payment in lieu and support his application to the ZBA for a variance. To do payment in lieu.
Yep. It's not that easy because the, the organizations that try to keep track of it, it's a, like a perpetual fund. Uh. It's like a real estate fee. Of seven percent, but they charge ten percent or something like that. It, it was uh it was a difficult situation.
Again, my opinion, this is not gonna do anything to increase the supply of affordable housing. It's always, all it's gonna do is impose more work on something, right? Trying to fill the numbers into the formula. If in that fact, we ever have to fill numbers into the formula.
So what would you suggest? Should we uh eliminate that affordable housing bylaw? No.
I think it has, I think the trust has to be funded differently. And it has to be based on construction costs, including land, so people can't get around the eight units. Or whatever, be- because you can put a, you can put a development in of fifty units and not a nickel goes into the fund. But you can do it, have a development of eight, that people, you gotta, and it's not structured, it's structured.
Mike, I think, uh, I mean, your argument is, it's a good financial one, but the reason we made that number uh, eight or ten is because what we did not wanna do is uh have people build twelve, fifteen units and then we would eventually get below the ten percent threshold. So that's why that number was put in place.
Well. I think if we had I sound like a socialist here, but you know, uh, if we had a the, the easiest thing to do would be to impose a cost tax on construction. And so everybody puts into the kitty. You're gonna come into town, you're gonna build a two million dollar home someplace? And you don't have to put anything into the Affordable Housing Trust? Come on.
Well, this, that's the state, the state's problem. They're doing that now. You're being taxed.
Mike, aren't there gonna be developers that wanna develop more than five or six acres, which would limit them to the seven or eight?
Yeah.
Just a second, everybody.
I think by having this type of thing in place, you're dissuading them from, from developing.
Okay. Just to be clear. Everybody somewhere, somewhere somebody got the idea of seven and eight units. The, the inclusionary bylaw specifically says six or, six or more requires so the developers can only develop, can only build up to five units and get away with not putting anything into the fund.
Right.
You know, why is an ideal unit movers being tapped, you're putting something in, that's a major development in town.
That's not residential.
It's not residential.
Well, the, yeah, but so, so what?
They are gonna be putting something in under the transfer of development rights, though.
Yeah, okay, you got that, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I just think we're spinning our wheels here on something that uh is not gonna result in much of anything coming to the trust fund, but we gotta vote on something. That's, that's my argument. In some ways, I'm the devil's advocate, but it's just becoming clear to me that uh that's why I'd like to know how much, how much, how much money in Shrewsbury has gone into the trust fund over the last five years.
So I'm, I'm, I just found their housing production plan. It's in their housing production plan with regards to their payment in lieu of units. Since the adoption of the bylaw in two thousand and five. The town has generated four hundred and seventy-two thousand and twenty dollars and seventy-six cents.
And that's a town of how many people?
Um, I think there's about
Forty thousand?
No. Probably fifteen, twenty thousand.
How much is that? No, it's thirty-seven. They have about thirty-eight thousand people.
Thirty-eight thousand people has, over the last, since when?
Two thousand and five.
Or six.
So, so the last fifteen years, they've got four hundred thousand dollars into the trust?
Four hun- four hundred seventy-two thousand, yeah.
I rest my case.
Oh, housing has not exactly been booming anywhere in a state either.
Well, maybe they're actually building their units instead of doing the, in lieu of. I don't know if, if we know that.
Yeah, good point.
So, I mean I kinda like going back to the formula. Land plus, plus building, plus mortgage. Equals a number, subtract away the uh, affordability factor, and that's what they should be donating, putting into the fund. But or give them, or, or give them a flat fee to put in. And if they can prove based on that formula, that would be less than the planning board could be, could take a look at it.
Yep, and, and you know, it's, it's difficult to compare. If, if you know where Shrewsbury is, it's right across Lake Quinsigamond from Worcester. And Worcester is building tons of affordable housing, so it's uh it's the difference between a little bit more affluent community in a city that has uh thousands of units, so. Maybe that's, maybe that's their way of getting rid of their guilt.
So tucked in later in the plan, they are expecting some additional funds. Cause it talks about future development. So this was the plan that was adopted in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and so there's an additional for four hundred sixty-one thousand pending. About.
And does that say anything about where they stand in terms of the ten percent?
Good question.
I can, I can find that, that.
Cause maybe they've been trying to encourage billing them to avoid hostile uh forty Bs.
Maybe we could do a friendly, what is it, forty B in town?
Friendly forty B?
Yeah.
We tried that once and we got it tucked to us. Mountain View Apartments. Jim, were you on then?
Yep. I remember that one.
Arthur Pichet presenting.
Yeah. Somehow that doesn't quite look like what he told us.
Exactly right, exactly right.
I, I, I'm just actually thinking about it from from Mike's perspective. Maybe maybe having a trigger point. The, the safe harbor below, was it? Five, five or fewer units, the safe harbor, um. Six or more, you have to jump into the affordable pool. Um, maybe, I, I, I don't know if there is a structure that would support this. But is there something we could assess at the subdivision approval level? For an assessment, like, based on the number of lots?
I think that would not allow anyone to escape.
Well, true.
Cause I just, you understand my drift. I was trying to be the devil's advocate here. Frankly, I didn't know where my argument was going, but I found out pretty damn quickly.
Well, um, but there, there's something, there's something not unfair about if you, if you want to do approval not required lots. Use up all the frontage you have. If you want a subdivision. Everybody has to play. I, I don't know if there is a I don't know if there's a way to monetize that.
There should be, that, that's the same boat we're in, Bill. All we do is lower our threshold. There should be, that's the same boat we're in, Bill. All we do is lower our threshold to any subdivision as opposed to six lots.
Then we could go to something like, because it's being spread across everything, we could go to more of a flat figure that uh. You know, the one condition of subdivision approval is a payment of $20,000 per building lot. Per subdivision. To the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Or maybe you do something like a range. Zero through three lots is, say, 20,000 a lot. Um, three through six lots is another number, and above six lots, it's this number.
We call that the Lehman front formula on Wall Street. You know what happened to Lehman Brothers?
But once, once again, uh. We're at just below 13%. Most communities are. Are below it, Amherst and Northampton, but the fact remains is that. We're anticipating us going below the 10%. That was the reason we did all of this. So we would not fall below 10%.
Right.
I think maybe we should have a trigger. If all of a sudden we reach 11%, then we should initiate this. But why should we truly build it up and really not have this club sticking over our head?
Because we know for a fact in the next 10 years, we're gonna be below 10%. Unless something.
Not really, not really, because uh, we could negotiate these people to extend the contract.
Well, Mountain View, they, the Mountain View is coming off in. I'm not sure what it is, in, in about five or six years, Mountain View comes off of the list.
But they extended it for three more years because the town repaired their water leak.
That's what I'm talking about. It's, it's, it's got about five or six years that are coming off of the list.
Yeah, so uh.
And, and that's gonna bring us down a little bit, but when. Whatever they're called now with the senior housing over there, where they've got a bunch of affordability. There is about, I don't know, what is, what is 10 or 15 years, 12 years left over there? That's gonna bring us, that's gonna bring us down. So we're trying to not. We're, we're trying to not be reactionary here. We want to be proactive and do what we can to keep the stuff.
That's, that's the reason we put it in, but uh, that was 10 years ago, so. Well, I, I'm saying the wolf is not at our door, so we don't have to make the decision. This year or.
Well, that's, that's, that's true, but we don't want to have this conversation going on so that Mike gets so discouraged that he leaves us in anger.
You know, it only, it only happen if I go off my meds.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but, but you, you're right, Joe. We don't need to do it tonight, but we, we don't want to drag this out like Bill said.
So long. I mean, we can always amend this, but you know, let me just ask you. What if a developer came into town and said, uh. I want to take over one of these hotels on Route nine, and I want to turn it into low and moderate housing. Low, moderate income housing.
SROs.
Well, not necessarily single, single room occupancy, but one bedrooms and two bedrooms.
Will we incentivize that?
Excuse me?
Could we incentivize that?
Well, yeah, exactly.
Well.
Exactly.
Depending, I mean, that, that's, that's a, depending on the plan, let's see what they would propose.
Yeah, I've, I've heard, I've heard. I, I'd call more than a rumor, but uh. It's something for the board to start thinking about because clearly the nature of how he's changing, Route nine's changing. The hotels are all on Route nine. There's public transportation, which are important to lower modern income housing. And so just something.
We, we've actually learned a lot in the process. So one thing that we would say, if we're gonna, hey, let's make a deal. Uh, you want, uh, you, you want to put residential property, residential dwelling units in the industrial zone? Where they are not prohibited, where they are presently prohibited.
Yeah.
Uh. Okay, well, let's talk about that.
Sure.
Will you give us a perpetual affordability restriction? A permanent one.
Yeah.
And then maybe we would consider supporting a zoning change.
Okay, well, I think we could.
So that, that is part of it. If, if we can get involved with the conversation. You know, when, when that, when Winfield came in on a comprehensive permit. That was driven by the developer's desire to build something and the financing tools that they had available to them. Which required it to be, though, didn't require it to be affordable for more than, what, 20 years, 25 years maybe? Um. If we can really do some negotiations and get that perpetual affordability, that's a different story. And that solves, that goes to your concern, Joe, that, you know, we'll, we're not gonna fall off the cliff if we have some perpetual affordability there.
Take us into the next century.
Some of the units at Winfield or whatever they're called now are perpetual and some are not. So. I, I like Bill's idea about changing the subdivision. If you put a subdivision in, you put some money into a pot. Based on. You know, one to three or one to five, whatever it may be, and then above six, it's a different value, maybe.
I think it would certainly simplify things and take this in a different direction, direction. And I'm not sure if you're gonna disincentivize people from developing in Hadley, but we certainly know that if you develop in Hadley. You're gonna be putting, putting something into the trust. As we've got it structured right now, we have no guarantee that if you have development in Hadley. Of substantial development, that you're gonna get anything into the trust.
Right, yeah. So Ken, have you heard of anything like that?
I've been trying to do a Google search. Um, that's, that's interesting. Um, it's actually very fascinating um, that, that has come up. Um. So the requirement would be that if you are submitting your subdivision plans. That for every unit, there is just an automatic cost. Like a $20,000 per unit if you have a certain amount to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That really simplifies things.
Yeah, but it does raise the cost of housing for everybody else. Uh, the cost of housing is.
There's no such thing as a free lunch.
Yeah.
Let everybody subsidize.
Matter of what we do, Bill, I mean, Joe, this is raising the cost of housing.
Yeah. Well, you're right. We're in an unusual situation here because we have space and land that we're, we're vulnerable, I agree. But we're also, uh, the, uh. The elephant in the room is the University of Massachusetts has abdicated the responsibility for housing all the students. So we have students, uh, we're ordinarily a family of two, two kids and a couple. Now you've got five students in there that can bring a lot more rent, or six students in there, or maybe 10, I don't know how about, but. They can bring a lot more rent in for the, that particular unit of housing, so the affordability is, is gone. So.
The whole thing about hotels along Route nine, you know, the economics. That they put down on paper three years ago are not the economics that you're seeing now. Uh, and so there might be some room for some liquidations or sales to somebody just to get out of some of this debt. Uh, but that's just a side comment, but.
Two thoughts.
I think, excuse me?
Go, go ahead. I thought you were done.
No, no, that, that, I'm just saying the economics of the hotel business has changed dramatically. And it might be better used for those properties, including affordable housing along Route nine.
Well, I thought about that when, after you suggested it five or so minutes ago, and. The incentive is, the incentive would, I don't know, there would be enough to cover their cost to transform those. From what the code sees as transient lodging, to turn them into somewhere where you can cook. And have, you know, a stove and, and a full refrigerator and what that.
Maybe they could have a common kitchen.
No.
Like Apple, Apple.
And, and going to Joe's point about the university, uh, I don't know the particulars, but I think that they're working on a some pretty big deal. This new P three thing that they've been talking about, the public-private partnership. That they're trying to get someone to build a boatload of units. So.
Yeah.
You know. Some of the hotels there are like two or three stories, and so we solve the land problem.
I don't know. See if we can wrap it up some way, Ken. I mean, Ken has been patiently listening and he's done a lot of research for us. Uh, uh, I mean, we're spinning our wheels.
Is it the, is it the sense of the board, then we go with an assessment for subdivision lot?
I, I, I think we need to look at it as opposed to saying we want to do that. I think it's a good idea that we need to look into what. What the numbers would be and at what the. Splits would be on a number of subdivision lots.
Uh huh.
Am I correct in thinking that when we initially set this up, we have to go to town meeting, and if we tweaked it later, we don't? Is that right or no?
No, if, if we, if we change the number of lots to something. Under six, we need to go back to town meeting.
Or if we change the equation, how we calculate.
The equation we can do in a general bylaw, we're free to do that in our regulations.
Okay.
However, the over six lots in a subdivision donating and five or less not donating is a zone bylaw.
Okay.
So if we change that, we, we need to go back to town meeting.
I'd be curious, um, and you know, as I will look at subdivision regulations that may include. This amount of money that would be submitted to the Housing Trust Fund. And what that would do to affordable housing being developed on site. Um, you know, would that, would the requirement be that they're going to spend $20,000 per lot? And then on top of that be required to, if they're over a certain amount, six. To also build the affordable unit on site. Yeah, I think my thinking is right. Um.
Or that would, would be double dipping, wouldn't be, wouldn't we?
Well, or, or you could do it, if you build one through five lots, you donate 20,000 per lot, just as a number. If you build six or more, you donate according to whatever formula we come up with to the Affordable Housing Trust.
And there is room in there possibly for. Relieve, relieving the developer of making the payments if they provide an affordable unit in. On the premises.
Absolutely, yeah. The donation is, is a voluntary thing if they provide on off-site.
How about if he builds it off-site?
Or off-site, yeah, off-site.
Yeah.
Any place in the town of Hadley.
Right.
You know, we, we were kind of using Shrewsbury as a prototype here.
You've been using Shrewsbury, not us.
Yeah.
You've been using Shrewsbury, not the rest of us.
Ken brought it up, not me.
Well, you keep harping on it.
Well, he, he brought it up, the Shrewsbury model. I'd like, I'd be curious to see whether or not.
Sorry.
Uh. Any developments have taken place in Shrewsbury under the current bylaw that includes an affordable unit in developments?
I, I mean, I, that, I think that the, the town planner can help me with that number with regards to. How the inclusionary bylaw has worked for the town with, with. Affordable units built on site or affordable homes built on site. Um, I know there's a little more density over there, so. Um, you know, they have.
Some density here too.
Yeah. But, yeah, I think that, that could be insightful. Um.
But Shrewsbury, Kenny, as you know, you've got the hospital close by, and you've got MBI Massachusetts Biomedical Institute. That hundred acres of the state hospital is, is booming in. The nice residential area is right across Lake Quinzigamon and. Um, it doesn't sound like a place that's gonna have a lot of affordable units because they're expensive homes.
Yeah.
Well, okay, those are my editor.
We have to find a way to make units affordable. And this is not, our approach maybe is not accomplishing that.
Uh, we're. This is not an easy bylaw. We know that. We never expected it to be easy when we started. And.
We're gonna go to the moon, not because it's easy, but because it's hard, so.
So.
No, we choose to.
Yes.
So Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. Currently, we say you have to make a payment in lieu, but without a calculation that we provide. That's a negotiation that we do, like we did with Barry, right? And so what we're trying to do is set a formula that takes it off the negotiating table?
Basically, yes. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to set something that's not so much a negotiating point, but a. You know, the negotiation should be, well, you know, I can build it for a hundred dollars a square foot. Well, prove it. Kind of a deal, okay? We think it should be closer to 250. So if you can build it for, for a hundred, show us your numbers.
Mark Dunn may be on to something. The fact is, we're trying to set something up as a guidance, like you were saying, Jim. But. We shouldn't put it in stone because obviously the economy is gonna be changing, the building costs are gonna be changing. Maybe we should negotiate it at the time, just set the number of units that are gonna be involved, but the negotiation can be put off, but. But what, is that what we really want to do, or do we want to make specific guidelines to say, this is what the cost is? Bingo.
I think we want to have specific guidelines, but with wiggle room to what, uh.
I, I.
Part of what, part of the process I see here is that we are using our accumulated expertise. In this area, not necessarily to straightjacket the next generation. But to give them some guidance so they don't have to go through all of this again.
Good point.
Ten years from now.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, that we don't want to give them such hard numbers that it's, it's, it's set too much in stone. It's gonna be enough, like Bill said, wiggle room to make it reasonable. Today and in the future. The good thing is, I mean, this is gonna be a regulation, so it's not, it doesn't take the town meeting to, to change it.
Wiggle room, but not arbitrary and capricious.
Yeah.
We, we, think of this, Marcus, we're writing our memoirs.
Well, we're tying our noose. I'm not sure what.
We want to continue this to, uh, October 19th?
Oh, that might be a plug that.
We wanted Kevin on that, and we can only do it after Kevin, depending what we found out.
Yeah, we, we could continue it just for two weeks. All we have next week is, our next meeting is the public hearing on the fall town meeting zoning.
Oh, okay. Mike's not gonna be here, though, at that one.
No.
I could play devil's advocate for him.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've tried to train, I've tried to train you. It's been tough, but.
Okay.
Okay, uh, yeah, that, that gets into the miss more than one meeting rule, but I think that. You can, so we didn't really open the hearing for tonight.
That's right. We never, we're only talking about Ken's formula.
But you did miss a prior meeting.
I got, I got that sign I told you.
Yeah, but if you're gonna, if we schedule it for two weeks from now and you miss that, then you would not be able to vote, but you could still have an opinion.
Okay, but the other thing is, if we don't open the inclusionary zone, but we just talk about the idea, we're not opening the hearing again.
Okay.
We can just talk about the formulas that we're talking about tonight and different ideas.
And educate us.
And not make any decision.
Okay, so I'm excited to share this, this bylaw with you that I just stumbled across from Barnstable. Um, but. Um, but it, it's really interesting, it, 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 it addresses the paying into the fund for each lot that's created, um, through subdivision approval. Um, so, anyway. I'm gonna share that with you after this meeting.
Okay, great, thank you, Ken.
Um, okay, so.
Maybe we, that, that whole idea of, uh, affordable housing in the industrial zone, maybe we could, you, you, you guys could think some more about that.
Okay, so we'll continue the discussion to October fifth. Like, we'll continue the public hearing to either the seven, the nineteenth, or
November second?
November second.
We may be too worn, depending on, but we can always continue. If we continue it to the nineteenth, we can always just move it again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause everybody will be, let's just do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to October nineteenth.
I'll second.
Good job, Ken Sherlock Comia.
We got a motion in a second? Uh, to continue the hearing, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good.
Ken's opposed.
So. Um, I see that Tom is here. Tom, are you paying attention?
You might have fallen asleep on us.
Joe, I'm here, how you doing?
All right, so Hampshire Mall did not come in tonight.
Okay. So I'll get on her, cause I, you know, they should have removed at least one of those signs uh, for the entrance there, so.
So there's one other thing that Tom and I were discussing, I sort of gave him a green light, but since he's here, the, um, that mural they put up at, uh, LL Bean.
Got a rip.
The framework behind it is rotten and it has to come down.
Ready?
It's got a rip in it too.
Probably why the water got in on the wood behind it.
Right.
Uh, they wanna repaint it. And my recollection of the site plan approval was, they originally came in with a design that we approved, and then they came back and said, can we put that mural on? So, uh, I said, uh, to Tom, because it was sort of between meetings, that as long as the color they were proposing to repaint the wall with was the color that had been approved and when we did site plan approval, they wouldn't have to come back and see us.
As I recall, they originally proposed, basically the wall would look like their credit card, so it was like branding. And Mike said, what about if you did our local area? And so then they had an artist turn it into the Holyoke Grange, is, is that not right?
Don't recall.
So then it wasn't, so then it wasn't so much branding.
The original, that was when they were talking about putting up a decal or whatever that thing is. The original design, as I remember, was just, it was just painted, uh, a color. Then, then they wanted to come back and refurbish it. Or they wanted to up the game, but I think, uh, they provided Tom with the color, it was just a an off-white or brownish tone of some sort.
Yeah, it's, it's very neutral, it's, it's, um, so I do have that in an email, the color and all.
There's, when they came back to, to do something different, that was when we approved the, uh, the mural, which I guess is, you know, printed on something and then hung up there, but that phase that you're remembering was the was the second level, the first level was just a painted wall. And that's what we approved originally.
I concur with what Bill says, if it's gonna be a neutral color, you know, they don't have to come back to us, but if they're gonna put something else, well, then they'll have to come back, that's it.
Kind of like what we said to Planet Fitness, you know, if it's your branding, then that, that impacts the signage, but if it's a neutral color that ties into the rest of the complex.
That's right, Mark.
I was in there last night, actually, and the sales guy said that they wanted to repaint it because it was peeling, so he didn't say anything about changing it, but.
Uh, I do not have anything else.
Who was the first person who came in tonight, Bill?
Uh.
James Channing.
Jim Channing, he's the general counsel for Pride.
Okay, yeah, that's right, that was the AP and our, okay, yeah.
They're, they're in-house attorney.
Okay. All right, I have nothing else. Anybody have anything?
No, I, I gotta ask Bill, uh, what time do you want me to sign that lot? Uh, pick a time and, uh, if you wanted to.
I'll, I'll give you a call, I, I don't know what tomorrow's gonna be like, I don't need it for tomorrow, so I, I just need to connect with you sometime to get it done.
That's fine, I'm around.
Okay.
Hearing done, motion to, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken, yeah.
Motion, motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Vote beginning is history, thank you, and thank you, Ken, and thank you, John.